Welcome everybody into another backtesting session. As you can see on the screen, we're coming into Monday, the 24th of January. Now opening Epicman. And yeah, if you see, we're basically, if you remember, we're basically breakeven after a very bad first week where we went down like 3%. And then in the second week, during the second week, uh, we actually, uh, got back all the losses and we are slightly profitable. But I mean, it's a breakeven. So it's Monday, 24th of January. We have, uh, in an hour and a half, uh, the PMIs. Then we will have on Tuesday, the consumer confidence. FMC statement that we might even trade it. Um, at a press conference, let's see, on Wednesday. Let's see what do we have this Thursday. Of course, we have lots of news. So this will be a very, um, full week. And on Friday, we have the PC. So we might even just simply wait for these PMIs. Unless the price action is really good. Uh, yeah, let's see what the market can offer us this week. A lot of volatility for sure. Let me save it. Okay. Okay, so so far we can identify these intermediate areas. We can have this last low and the last high during London session. So let's see within 8:20 AM Eastern, what is the price telling us? What is offering us? I mean, if the price is offering us some clear perception with a clear break and rates below there or clean break and rates above there, we will take it even if it's way before the actual news. So let's see. Okay. Interesting break and retest of this level. Now it's 8:20. You may see a spike in volume with the possible confirmation of entry over there. Yeah, spike in volume not really worth entering so far. Okay, let's see now. Looks like we are retesting this level. This possible entry over there would have still been okay. And we will, the P will be above, right above this level. Let's see what is actually offering us the perception. This might be an interesting, uh, high risk reward entry. Price is making a new higher high, retesting this area for possible continuation. But I will wait for safe perception above here. Otherwise, I will simply wait for the news to bring some volume and direction. As you see, that would have been a loss. Yeah, price is now very aggressively breaking down. Remember that, uh, we still have one hour, but now the volume is coming in. Let's see if we have some clear perception below there. Let me save it. No clear cut by section. Okay, so far looking good. Now we might want to slow down. If it closes, where it closes, we might even take a sell. Yeah, that could be a possible sell. High risk, high reward. But it's in trend taking the risk. Uh, we're taking the risk of a fake out, but the momentum is quite strong. We are moving into bearish fashion. We don't have any price action, uh, positivity area on the left hand side. So let's see what is, uh, what the market has to offer us. Yeah, it was a fake out. But now if it breaks below these lows, we might want to re-enter. Okay, let's see for the new Forar candle. The new Forar is opening right now. And that could have possibly been the entry over there for the candle close. Better, let's go that we didn't enter so far. Okay. So yeah, we got caught in a fake out and that's normal, that's okay. The most important part is not to re-enter multiple times without price action. Let's see now. Uh, with the New York Stock Exchange opening and 15 minutes later, the actual, uh, the actual report. So yeah, obviously so far this is not relevant anymore. Okay. This one is at the five. Let's get on this one. I know below there. Right, this eyes on the left hand side. Okay, let's see with New York Stock Exchange opening. Okay. Spike down. Okay, looks like we are coming down to these lows. Let's see, they are respecting a decrease in these numbers. So let's see now in 10 minutes. I don't really, I wouldn't really fancy entering right now, 5 minutes before the news. But we, I don't know, yeah, it's looking positive for continuation bearish. Okay, let's simply move to, okay, this is the news minute. We can see that it came out even worse than expected, way worse than expected. So I am betting on a bullish bias, which could be high risk reward there or safest above this level. So this could possibly be very high risk reward entry. Very high risk reward also. Yeah, I'm betting on it. Yeah, not really looking nice. Let's see if it pushes back up. Nope. Okay, so we got our second loss. High risk reward, this is some sort of formal, uh, formal perception. I mean, yeah, it was very bad, but the, the market was not showing anything about that. So, uh, if market is still interpreted as positive, then I will still have to, to trust him. So now let's see if we have some clear, more clear perception. 10 AM Eastern candle, still same perception. If we break below this lows, I will take a sell. Now for example, over there at this candle close. Okay, let's see now. We might take our third trade of the day. Still very high risk. Let's see now if it works. Yeah, no, looks like 1000. Oh, maybe yes, let's see. It's, uh, okay, then 30. Yes, pushing too, too strong after this rejection, this rejection at around 30 pips. Uh, yeah, we got our three losses. Uh, only the first one was really okay, I would say. Otherwise, the, the, this, these two were quite hushed, I would say. And this one should have been a sell, for example. This is more clear as a sell, because we are retesting these lows. But yeah, during live trading, I was not able to see it. So let's move to the following day. And it starts to be down already 3% at the, on a Monday. And that's usual, unusual mistake that I do. It's a typical mistake that I do today, 25th. We have the consumer confidence coming at 10 AM. So let's see if we have some clear volume and a price action, um, before that. To take advantage of it. Okay. So now let's go to 8:20. To see what candle formation we have. So far we have these eyes on the left hand side that we want to see respected. And these lows. Over there. So let's, but let's see in the minus. What market structure is being formed? So yes, now we have the more, the most recent, uh, PSA is actually this one. We have these lows, but yeah, it's, uh, I will stick to it, this one. Let's see now, huge volume spike. Let's see if we break above and retest it. Yeah. Okay, so far it looks like it's a fake out, there's not really much of a direction. It's still staying above. So what I would love to see, some clear perception for, for an entry. Yes, because I don't want to get caught in this. This might possible, possibly a retest and then continue on the downside. And let's see. Okay, let's see what the new Forar candle. Okay. Still failing to break below. Now we are getting in the new Forar candle. Uh, even the first entry will still be live. Let's see now what the market can offer us now with the new Forar candle. If we have a clean breakout. Yeah, so far it doesn't look like it. I will not enter buys now after all this pressure. I would prefer to wait for some clear pressure above these highs. And yeah, sales. Yeah, we would love to see some correction for sales. Okay, let's see. New York Stock Exchange opening now. And we have enough in our consumer confidence. So far the perception is quite, mm, tricky, I would say. Also, we could have the market later bit on the, on the sideline before the FMC statement tomorrow. Okay, so we add. Uh, we didn't have any news. But we have a spike in, uh, in volume. I don't know why. So let's see what is actually, what it might actually tell us. If we have any market structure forming or possible continuation bullish. Okay. Okay. Okay, 10 AM candle open. Consumer confidence better than expected, still worse than prior. So a little bit mixed. Let's see now. If we have a break, uh, above this area. About this PPL. Offer sells, uh, I don't know, I will see, I will need to see some, uh, mixed, some market structure forming and selling. Very strong. I don't know if this one, we could see that if we have any kind of, uh, breaking, retesting these lows uh, on the broker, we're going to see that. That might have been a, a sell, that on the one minute is too fast to, it's too, too slow to see. And, um, yeah, even this retest of these lows is quite sketchy. Uh, the news was still better than expected. So I might want to see possible retest to go back on the upside. But yeah, on the one minute is not really possible to enter. So let's see if we have any kind of closing at these highs over there for possible entries. But now price is breaking down, strong volume, strong volatility. Let's see, uh, what is telling us. Okay. I might see now in the continuation down, bearish. These lows. And I would love to take this entry, for example. I want to see volume continuing down. And not push back up. Yeah, not looking rate so far. Yes, so we got, uh, another loss. I want to see now, um, let's see if I have further protection before London close. Okay, yeah, nothing really much. I want to see them on the broker. Uh, so this one was the 24th. Yeah, we are on the 25th. Which is here, okay, is exactly here. So, uh, the, yeah, this is 10 AM candle. We have a this breaker retest. This entry, for example, would not be, uh, yeah, wouldn't be any difference over there. I would probably take the same loss. Price only going 20 pips. Yes, that's, uh, that's exactly the same. Hmm, yeah, not really a market structure being formed. Only thing was probably this entry, but yeah, really, really difficult to enter. So yeah, that's a simple, uh, loss. Let's go to the next day. The following day is very, quite dense in the, okay, in the reports, we have nothing really important during this New York session. But we, we, we might want to be there for the FMC statement. So let's see. Okay, we're coming into the 8:20 PM Eastern. So far the price is still in this range. Let's see now with some volume spikes. Okay. Let's see if we break above and retested it. Okay, if we cannot close this above this candle, we might have, yeah, we might have had some entry on the bullish bias. Otherwise, I would see, I want to see a clear breakout above. So far nothing really happening. Let's see, okay, we're breaking down, possible correction down, only safe entry below this level. Even a retest of these lows might be possible entry for continuation sales. Okay, so volume spike now tells the new Forar candle opening now, okay. See if we manage to break below. Yes, so this entry will be now 30 pips in profit. Let's see if we can manage to stay below, retest it. Okay, and we might have a possible continuation sales. Let's see, let's see, let's see. Okay, very nice, very nice volume. Yes, that will be it. So for example, in this case, uh, yeah, very good, 45 pips. Coming into New York Stock Exchange open now in 5 minutes. And let's see if we have a retest of any PSA for continuation sales. Yeah, for example, this one, I don't know if on the 60x chat, 60x tick chart, we could have had this entry. Now let's see if we'll continue breaking down below these lows. Otherwise, we will just wait until the FMC. So so far we're breaking below. Okay. Let's see, let's get into the new Forar, the new 10 AM candle rejection and these same previous highs. And a spike up. If it is being grabbed, then we might see now continuation bearish. Looks in this mess, there's no entry. Yes, so we are most likely, uh, let's see now if we break below. Yeah, not really, okay, after London close. Okay, so let's go into the FMC statement, which is at 7 in an hour. So let's see now if we have some pressure. In this case, we will take sales below there, possible buy above there. Let's see the pressure. Yeah, I think we might have had this entry. Let's see if we have a candle close. Yeah, we might want to risk it. Yeah, not. Okay, we are going very blindly. Now we are coming into the press conference in 10 minutes. Which is right here. Let's see if we break below. Okay, let's see if we have a retest of these lows. Yeah, looks like we're not. We are testing these lows on the left hand side. Okay, so that might have been the, the retest, but we don't know what is actually telling, what is telling us. So yeah, this entry would have probably been profitable. Yes, so this entry that we were waiting for would have been profitable. Let's see, uh, on the actual day. So the 26th. Right? Yes, I wanted to see the price action over here at 18:42. Uh, doing, yes, okay, so this one was the entry. At 18:42.5. Okay, so this was my entry and it went nicely. Then what I took, I didn't take anything, okay, yeah, we saw, we had this entry at 18:37.5. As you can see here was a very nice and clean entry, even this entry. But this one, the one we were looking for was much nicer on this chart than what, uh, okay, at FMC. So I took it. And, uh, okay, 18:07 at 18:28. Uh, which is, okay. So this is the spike up. I think I took it, uh, around, probably around there, yes. Well, 18:28. Yes, was around there and we got spike up. Then, uh, yes, we had this perfect entry. This was the entry that I was looking for. As you can see here, perfect entry, cannot close at 18:25. Which is this one, 18:25. As you can see, it was perfectly, this would have been an entry and that would be a win. So yes, quite unlucky, but, uh, that was the entry for me. So I will, uh, simply go back in time a little bit because that was my entry that I was looking for. As you can see, I got back in time to take this actual entry. As it, if it was on the, uh, one minute chart, on the 60x chart, I will take it. As you can see, it will close exactly there. This candle was my PS, my trade idea. So that's where I will take the entry. Okay, it will nicely augment the profits and that will be the, the actual FMC, uh, the FMC trade. Press conference, yeah, it's an hour. Now we can go to the following day, which is, uh, GDP day. It's at 1, okay. So, uh, they are waiting, they are expecting, uh, very much increase in GDP. Let's see. Dobregood orders, expecting a decline, huge decline and an improvement in unemployment claims. So of course with all this, uh, with this price, with this news happening in half an hour, I'm not really, uh, taking any trades, any risk before that. I will only wait for the perception to, to be clear and then take, take it from there. Okay. Let me just. Doesn't change much. So let's move to the actual news. So this is 8:20 and we have these PSAs. Let's see with the news if we can break below or above any of these. Okay, so now of course spike in volume and volatility, the spread is increasing. Let's see now, so what was the, the, the data? GDP very much increasing, which is very good and it's feeding into the, okay, we can raise the interest rate even more. So dollar strength, gold weakness, very much increasing. Dobregoods decrease, yes, but not that different than the, the, the expected. The unemployment claims were exactly on point. So, uh, increase, decreasing, which is good for the, for the dollar. So I'm expecting a full, uh, strength of the dollar. So with possible break, break and retest below these lows. Let's see if we have some volatility spikes or we can just directly straight push down. Okay. Let's see where it closes. Yeah, we might take a high risk, high reward entry. So far the perception is not that strongly bearish, but I'm expecting, uh, expecting it to go down. Yes, we might even, even be fixed out. The stop loss is, I don't really like it, but 15 pips now it's, it's quite. This surplus is, I don't really like it, but 15 pips now it's quite small, but that doesn't cover much. Let's see if we can continue pushing down as expected. Okay, I would love to see more volume, yeah, in the right direction, not in the opposite ones. Let's see, another retest of the low, let's see, I want to see it breaking below. Breaking these lows, a possible continuation bearish. Let's see, so far it looks like he's facing, uh, some resistance, but still looks like he can manage it. Okay, very nice, let's see, retest and goes, okay, very nice, very nice trade idea. And we're up for the week and the price can continue pushing down, uh, very nice. Let's see if we have now a retest of these lows. This, mainly this one, this one's a little bit of a more, a bigger PSA, I would say. So that's where more orders might be, but let's see, uh, yeah, we might take a high risk reward entry. For the possible continuation bearish, and we can see the price is slowing down. We might even just risk 0.5%, or we can simply risk the normal size. I don't like to sell into this one, uh, but yeah, might be the setup that I have to do. At least I'm not rewinding this, I have to take this, uh, this decision. And after winning, I always struggle to take another trade, so I think I might wait. For maybe New York Stock Exchange open and some clear, more clear pressure action. Let's see, New York Stock Exchange, yes, 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 yes. That's why I'm checking out, uh, that sucks, that sucks a lot. Only good, like, I don't think I will be stopped out, yes, 15 pips. And just to check if I will be stopped out, but I'm... So let's see if I will have been stopped out with the 15 pips surplus. No, yeah, it will still be safe, yes. Yes, that will, and that will go. 10 AM was good, I was a bit of a chicken, so I don't really, really love it. Let's now if we can break below or have some correction above these highs for possible continuation. I don't know if this minute candle probably give us some entry on the one minute. On the 60 ticks chart, now we're facing this rejection also, we can retest of this low, of this ice can give us further continuation bullish. Not so far. Okay. Yeah, we can retest of this area, at the 10 AM candle. Face to hold and then we might have a continuation bearish. Yes, continuation bearish from there. After all this pressure action, just want to see on the 60 ticks, so this is the, uh... We are on the 27th, yes. So that was right after the news, this was after the new Foro. So we are talking about this one. Yes, this one. A very nice entry, 50 pips. Then yes, you can see whether the breaker retest this one, yeah, I would count this one as, uh, as the trade that I wanted to take. This one exactly, so, uh, we saw the breaker retest of these highs, that's what I was, I wanted to enter over there. 2 for 37. Yeah, 37, yeah, started this entry. And yeah, then we had the breaker retest on the downside, which would be this one. So yeah, I took this one as a chicken, because I rewind and then I took it. But actually this entry that we didn't have is this one, I think. Yeah, it was this one at 18:03. Yes, this one was the one that I want to enter, so it's after all, it's the same, uh, same amount of wins. And it will be good, this one, yeah, it's fine. And now we can move on to Friday and close of the week. Let's see if we can make some more profits or, uh, or what? I think today we have the PCE. So come on to... Okay. Let's see the simulation. Okay, so we have the PCE in half an hour, so let's see if it's going to increase or decrease. I would also want to see the, here, over here, but this one doesn't have, yeah, but we can basically just, uh, based off the, the actual market and the chart. Okay, now it's 8:20, we are staying above this PSA, which is interesting. Of course I would wait for the news, not adding anything before that. Okay, let's see now in 10 minutes. Okay, so correction, okay, let's see how it is, the PCE. Hmm, 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 where is it? Okay, it's as expected, the month of the month, I don't know about the year over here. Then we have the consumer sentiment at 10 AM, which might be impacting. So so far, of course I want this one. Let's see now. Okay, we're coming into the new Foro. I will possibly break in below. New Foro candle right now. Okay. Once we now breaking below these lows. Let's see if we get a retest. Yeah, this was, I think if it goes, it was the retest on the 60 ticks chart and that was it. Let's see with the New York Stock Exchange. If it keeps pushing down, I will want to check if there was an entry with a candle closed at the level on the 60 ticks. Let's see now with the new, New York Stock Exchange opening. Okay, it is here. So, okay, let's see, yeah, will still be a loss, but we're going to check it later. So let's see now with the, uh, the news in 15 minutes, 10 minutes now. Okay, so we have, uh, consumer sentiment, it's decreasing compared to the previous one and to the expected. So let's see if we are getting a bullish push, might also be above this level. I mean, it's not impacting that much the markets. Okay, now we're pursuing breaking above. Okay, if we have a possible retest of this area. Nice breakout. And in any case, it will only be 30, 40 pips. Okay, strong, very strong bearish candles. Retesting these lows, we might take a high risk reward entry, but we are in the, in the, in the mix, so I'm not really wanting to take it. Yeah, even if that will go to profits, yes. Okay, yes, it's getting late, let's see now, how was the pressure action on Friday? So, uh, we were, this is New York open. When was it? So we were talking about this, not this one, this one. At 17:84. Uh, yes. Yeah, it was, it was this one, not the clear, most clear cut pressure action, but yeah, we had a candle close. We have the rejection, then we had this retest of these lows, still 40 pips, quite a little bit of mixed. Pressure action only 40 pips, not much of a volume. But yes, so, uh, at the end of the day, we didn't take any trade on this Friday, very mixed market structure. And yeah, we might have had a bit of, but this here, let's see, just for the sake of it, because we moved a lot, but... Yeah, it doesn't really look like we had stronger direction unless we took really high risk reward entries. There wasn't really a trend, yeah, this one looks nice, it's right, this is right before. Unless we really entered, only the only entry would be with the fundamental bias over there. We are waiting for the break, but it had not really clear cut pressure action. At the end of the day, we closed off at plus 6.9. Uh, we took, uh, one trade that was, uh, this one that we saw it, we failed to take it live due to being fearful. But yeah, this trade, even if I missed this one, I would have taken this one as I showed you on the 60 ticks chart. And that would have been a profit. Uh, of course we had, uh, this win, which was very clear on the 60 ticks chart. We took this loss, which was very stupid, this win that was good. And yes, the confidence needs to be back, needs to be there. Otherwise you can see how I'm struggling even with the simulation to take entries. But still, plus 6.5 is still good for a week and I hope you guys enjoyed and I'll see you next time.